Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for August 13, 2019. Would Dana Leiting please do the roll call for us?
Okay. Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little.
Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on our actions here today? Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, the agenda received as proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment to the board that is for an item not scheduled on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Item A, resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for the county.
The total claims are 383,026 and 87 cents and $24,490 and 96 cents is from Country View.
So 24,000 is part of that total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Please answer my roll call vote.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Resolution passes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning Kathy.
Good morning Board, Kathy Naclos, county engineer. I wanted to briefly update you on our construction work. Our Raymond Road project, we were forecasting that that would open on Friday. That is probably most likely now going to open next Tuesday or Wednesday. There's an issue with the smoothness at the bridge approaches and that is, it is a DOT bridge, so they are working with our contractor to get that resolved. That may result in a few more days of work needing to be complete that, that is what the holdout will most likely be. The Cedar Ropsi Road paving project, that should, that should start Monday, but it won't start with the paving. The first order of work on that project is to base widen the roads, so we are turning the shoulder, the existing shoulder into two feet of pavement, so that the contractor goes through and widens the road two feet on each side. And then they will start the paving process, so that, that work will take probably a week, with paving probably starting the last week in August. And then there will be some closures of the road and there will be flaggers and we're talking to a lot of residents, so we do have our changeable message signs out on the roadway now for the next three or four days, just to inform people of what's going to be going on. We have finished with, on the secondary roadside, we have finished with the rock hauling, the contract rock hauling. We have finished with the overtime for our employees as far as we're, we know at this point. We do still need to get five districts, five more miles of rock each district. We're hoping that the remaining weeks until October 1st, we are able to get that accomplished, weather permitting. And then lastly, I wanted to introduce Shane Eilers. If you want to stand up Shane, he's our new GIS asset technician. He's been with us since July 1st and he will be doing a lot of work with, for us in the future on mapping and helping us manage our assets. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Anyone else?
Morning Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director with Blackhawk County Conservation. Just wanted to update you on a project you may have forgotten about because we would like to have forgotten about it, but it is finally finished. Back in the fall of 2016, we had major flooding obviously and the Cedar Valley Nature Trail sustained three damaged areas along it. That turned into a FEMA project and we have been working with that. The last big hole, which is just north of the Gilbertville Depot, has been the problem due to wet conditions, problems with the contractor and shutdown with federal government at a certain amount of time. This thing has been put off, put off, put off, but it is finally finished as of two weeks ago with the exception of seeding. So that's come up, we've had to amend the budget several times because it's gone from, from one fiscal year to another fiscal year, but believe it or not, we have finally finished the blowouts on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail from 2016. So it'll be seeded here as soon as that window opens up. That window of seeding opens up about the middle of August, we'll seed it and it will be done. It does look very good and I think the bikers have all been very happy with it. So just wanted to update you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for updates? Moving on to the minutes approved for August 6, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. There's no discussion, all, please answer with a roll call vote.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. We have three hearings today. A rezone request for Dave and Chris Martenson, a request by Ron and Gene Rebune, and a rezone request by Julie and Scott Martenson. That will be later today's meeting. Moving on to item seven, consent to agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed for discussion or questions? If none, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Don Schmitz and Sons, Washburn, Iowa, for grading and stabilizing work, project number L 7003 on Simmons Road, with a bid of $17,559 be approved, and the chair to sign the contract.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kathy, would you like to talk about this?
Sure, can I get the overhead TV on? So both of the next two projects, I have talked to you quite extensively in work sessions. These two projects are extra work that we have encouraged due to the poor conditions from this past winter and spring. This first one is Simon's Road and this is a gravel road today. We had committed to Cedar Falls, we had placed this in our seal coat contract for this year, the existing year. Due to the large frost boil that developed on the road this past winter, we decided that we really needed to get this large frost boil repaired. We've dumped a lot of rock into the roadway. I can't get that picture to come back. So both, both of these items are unbudgeted. We had not planned to do this work. We did put together a small proposal, a one-page plan sheet. We sent it out to five local area contractors. We did get three bids back. The lowest bid was from Don Schmitz and I would ask that you go ahead and approve this work and then the work would be completed, I believe October 31st is our deadline for having the work completed. Once this work is completed, we're adding extra rock to the roadway to kind of cushion it in case we do have another large frost boil next year. We should be able to put Simon's Road on our seal coat next year and that's where I was saying we have made a commitment to the city of Cedar Falls that we would seal coat particularly that, that portion up to A1 Vacation Land. We will go all the way up to Mount Vernon Road.
And what did you say Kathy, the timeline was for that extra?
So in our small proposal, we told our contractor we weren't in a huge hurry. We want people to give us a good bid, we want it to be fit into their construction season. I believe the end of October is when the work has to be done. We haven't yet talked with Don Schmitz to see when they would actually like to come and do the work, but we are giving them plenty of time to get it done.
And then you talked about an extra cushion that you'd be wanting to put down.
So that's what...
As soon as he does that?
That's what this project is. We're adding about a foot of rock to this soft spot.
To this frost boil area?
Yes. Now apologize for that, that photo.
Is that what you usually do? Is that the way you usually fix it?
So it can be. In some cases, when we have a frost boil, we will excavate out the, the existing material, the native subgrade, for example. Sometimes that can be, you don't know how deep that could be. We, because the, we did place rock in this area in the spring because that has held up very well. We are pretty confident that if we, if we place more rock onto it, we're going to put a GeoGrid down and then we're going to place a foot of rock on top of this soft area. We're pretty confident that that should bridge the soft spot and prevent future frost boils.
So apparently you're digging down first, right?
Not in the, no, not in this case. I'm sorry, this is the wrong photo. I can't get the Simon's Road photo to, to show up.
I was worried it was me.
I apologize for that.
So, but I'm confused on a, I just had one of, we talked about the one that I had in front of my house up in Evansdale and that's not the way they did it, but I'm just wondering, a foot of, foot of rock, if you put a foot of rock on top of that, what do you expect it to do, sink in, you're going to roll it back and forth until it sinks in?
Sure. This on Simon's Road, it's a low spot. It's a...
So that's not the spot?
Right. It's, if you go north of...
I know where it's at.
If you know where A1 Vacation Land is, keep going north and you'll come to a low spot. There's no pipe in the, in the road because it's like a bowl. The fields drain right to that area. We just want to build that area up about a foot to give us another foot of cushion in case there is a frost boil there in the future. We're trying to be, do this at a relatively cheap price, but allow us to seal coat the road. That's what we've told Cedar Falls, that's what we've told the residents, that we would seal coat it.
And that timeline was good for Cedar Falls. I mean, obviously you couldn't do it this year, so...
Right, they understood, many of us have had to rejuggle our seal coat projects due to the existing conditions that we've had.
Any other questions? No questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Okay. Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Moving on to item B, resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Aspro, Waterloo, Iowa, for asphalt resurfacing, project number L 7004, on a section of Waters Road with a bid of $76,835 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
So this is the actual picture of Waters Road. So this area, if you're familiar with it, is just west of Hudson. Every year, we get flooding from the Blackhawk Creek. It's very slow-moving water, but it does inundate those fields, that road. When it resides, it sometimes takes part of the seal coat or leaves the seal coat in a condition where it's very, it breaks up. It's very crumbly when we get cars driving over it. The past few years, we've had to embargo this road in the spring, so then that prevents, we do have some ag traffic that uses this road. When it gets embargoed, they can't use it, of course. So this has traditionally been in our seal coat contract just about every other year. I would like to resurface it with a hot mix asphalt. It's approximately 1,300 feet with about 200 of that feet being in the city of Hudson. They have agreed to participate and pay their share of the 200 feet. If we put hot mix asphalt down, we're confident that that will be a better roadway. It won't continue to get washed out every year. We won't have to put it in the seal coat contract every year. Currently, we're spending approximately $12,000 a year to seal coat it and this is going to cost us approximately $78,000. So it will pay for itself in four or five years is what we're calculating. There's really no one who will do this work in this area except for Aspro, so we asked them for a patching, a price to do a patch. And that's the price we came back with. Like I said, the city of Hudson has agreed to pay approximately $6,000 of this.
And this would be completed, Lynn, Kathy?
This is another one where we said we would like it complete by the end of the construction season because we know everyone's schedule was filled out before we asked for the work. So I believe November 15th is when we're asking this work to be complete.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any more questions for Kathy?
Is there anything we can do out there to improve the conditions other than that? You know, because every year, even if we just get a little bit of rain, it seems that thing goes under.
It's very difficult to make any improvements out there because this is in the floodway of the creek. We are having, we can't place anything on top of the existing surface. We can't put in berm, we can't raise the road. In fact, we're milling the road three inches so that we can place the three inches of asphalt, so we don't raise the road any higher than it is today. It is very low volume. Yes, it's used by the residents for Hudson Heights, for example, and some agricultural traffic, but it is pretty low volume. We haven't really thought seriously about making any improvements out there just due to the lower volume and the, like I said, we can't place any fill in the flood, floodway without doing a study.
I will add, I serve on the newly created Blackhawk Creek Water Shed Coalition and we've been able to get a grant where we're hiring a watershed manager and so some, some efforts will be underway in the coming years to, to deal with some of the flooding issues and actually Vern Fish is our chair of our coalition.
If there are no other questions, it's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, other business. Motion that the travel request submitted by Debbie Bunger, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same $303 to attend the Iowa Public Employer Labor Relations Association in Cedar Rapids, scheduled for September 12 and September 13.
So moved.
Second.
In Ankeny, okay. Thank you. It's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion that the temporary employment of Susan Deaton to assist in the transition to the new finance director at the rate of $75 an hour be approved.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, is there any discussion or any questions?
I think this just goes to prove how important this position is because the current staff members who are engaging in these duties are just getting overwhelmed and they need help. So it just seems like it's logical to utilize the skills of Susan since she was our most recent finance director and how important it is for us to get a new one on board.
And for the public's information, if we were to contract this out privately, it'd be more like $250 an hour.
Yes. I want to thank Susan Deaton particularly for, for allowing us to take advantage of this great service and so...
My only problem with it is that all the work will be done in here, right? She'll be here on, onsite doing the work, not at home.
Oh, and I'm not sure if that's, if correct. I said there might be something done remotely, I guess we'll have to clarify that.
I'm not real hip on that then.
I know she'll be having to come in weekends and evenings if that's the case, but that's all right. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Would you like, I guess we don't need a roll call vote. Item C, motion that the revision to the insurance requirements and certificate of insurance policy effective August 14 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Dana, I believe you and my, oh, Mr. Trynen first, okay. Comments, thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, what this does is it adds a environmental and pollution requirement, insurance requirement if there's hazardous substances involved. It also adds a cyber liability requirement and just generally updates language, some of which is to clean up some language that didn't work so well in the past and other of which provides for some flexibility in terms of what policy limits are required. They basically, instead of having absolutes, it says, "Look, you're going to run this by risk management, you're going to run this by the county attorney's office and that's how you're going to determine it sometimes," because we found we're doing, we're making a lot of exceptions. Any questions?
No, thank you. Did you have any comments you wanted to make Dana?
I think Mike pretty much ended up there.
Thank you. And moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, resolution to appoint James Perry as the Finance Director for Blackhawk County effective Monday, August 26th at an annual salary of $78,350.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Perry is here today. I was going to say if you would like to step to the podium and say a few words or introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Morning Board. My name's James Perry. I have obviously been offered the position. I'm excited to get started and I'm excited to work with the previous finance director. I've been in banking for about 10 years and currently do quite a bit of budgeting and work with numbers, so I'm excited to get started and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
No?
Welcome on board.
Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, we'll answer with a roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Motion carries. The time is 9:20 and we'll enter into the hearings portion of our meeting.
Motion to receive and place on file proof and publication notice of public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to waive the first hearing, repeating.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Dana, are there any written comments?
There are none.
Thank you. Okay Seth?
Okay.
You're ready.
Okay, yeah, the, basically for the public hearing today, we have basically three rezone requests, three plat requests that are all within the same area. And if the rezone and plats are approved today, the land that's left over from the rezone and plat areas will be a 202 acre, basically like conservation land trust. So I'll, as opposed to repeating the same information three times, I'm going to just start once and summarize as much as possible, so to get this thing rolling smoothly. The first one we have is a rezone request to rezone 2.9 acres from a agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres. It's moved by Sage and seconded by Fezemeyer to approve the request to rezone 2.9 acres from a agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District at 10721 Mark Road in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural trust. Motion to approve carried unanimously. Parcel contains 2.9 acres for a proposed rezone from A to AR. The land's currently zoned agricultural district, the surrounding area consists of vacant land, some trees, rural homes, some farmland, surrounding area is zoned A Agricultural District to the south and east and land of the north is zoned A Agricultural District. The rezone area is designated as parks and open space on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Surrounding areas comprised of agricultural to the north and parks and open space to the southeast and west. None of the area to be rezoned is within a floodplain area. The land evaluation score was 49 out of 191 indicating low agricultural value. The applicant is proposing to rezone 2.9 acres from AR in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres. Site meets the lot and size requirements for the AR Agricultural Residential District by being greater than 1.5 acres in size, wider than 150 feet. The applicant's home was built in 1993 in the 15-year waiting period to request a rezone or minor plat for a home built on 35 acres as expired. It is recommended that a condition is placed on the newly created 201 agricultural land trust area that prevents it from being rezoned or platted for a period of 15 years. Should also be noted that at 8521 Kimball Avenue was approved for a rezone request and minor plat request after the 15-year period had expired. The proposed rezone area is not located within the Blackhawk County Land Use and Height Overlay District. The members of the Technical Review Committee were supportive of the creation of the 201.2 agricultural land trust for conservation purposes. And that's the staff report.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this? I was going to say I see that...
Oh, sure, sure. We have Steve Troski. He's been the main planner, working with the Martinsons and Rebunes and...
Hi there, good morning, Steve Troski. Planner with CGA Engineers, we've been asked to help the Martinson family through this. Seth noted, we've got a number of properties out there along Mark Road and the intent of this project is to create this land trust for the family. Right now, they all have pieces of property that are long and skinny slivers. Do you have a map in your packet? A colored map? Perfect. So each of those different colors represents a different family member and what they own and the intent is to bring all of that excess land into one deed to one title and the estate would own that through a trust. And then to do that, we would have to rezone the four parcels and then split off the four parcels. So this went through the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission of the county, those both passed, so I'm happy to answer any technical questions or background questions that you may have, but we hope that the end result of this will allow them to keep their properties and then also create a 200-acre conservation trust that we feel would benefit the county.
Any questions?
No questions.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I was going to say the family members?
Oh, please.
No, no. I just was asking if they did want to. I don't know if they did. They didn't offer.
All right, okay. Is there any additional questions for, for the first request?
No. Okay, we had a motion to close the hearing, there were no written comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance in two of our prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Moving on to the ordinance adoption, the ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended the Blackhawk County, Iowa Ag Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, rezoning certain property as described for David and Chris Martenson and to consider the same for adoption if adopted would be known as ordinance number 77-229.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer with a roll call vote.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted. Moving on, it's 9:27, the next hearing is for Ron and Gene Rebune.
Motion to receive and place on file proof and publication.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is for their property at 10615 Mark Road. Motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, are there any written comments?
No, there are none.
Thank you. Okay Seth, summarize away.
Okay, yeah, this is basically just another rezone request in the same area. It's at 10615 Mark Road, request to rezone 2.9 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres. It's moved by Fezemeyer and seconded by Nagel to approve the request to rezone 2.9 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District at 10615 in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural trust. Motion to approve carried unanimously, so this is a, just an additional property within So this is just an additional property within the very same area as the last one, and it did receive unanimous approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And when it went to the Board of Adjustment, it also received unanimous of approval to the 15-year provision, enabling it to be rezoned or platced.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you. If there are no questions, anyone else wanting to speak on this? All in favor to close the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. Resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider it in two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Moving on to the ordinance adoption. Ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Black Hawk County Iowa Ag Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999. The above request from Ron and Jean Rebune to consider the same for adoption and if adopted would be known as ordinance number 77-231.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Thank you. Time is now 9:30. We enter into the hearing proposal for ordinance number 77-231 for Scott and Julie Martinson.
Motion received and placed on file proof of publication.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion away of the first reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three, motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Were there any written comments on file?
No.
Thank you. Okay, Seth?
Okay, all right, yeah, this is the third property at 10211 Mark Road, Scott and Julie Martinson rezoned. Request to rezone 2.9 acres from a agricultural district to a agricultural residential district in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural land trust. It was moved by Nagel and seconded by Fezemeyer to approve the request to rezone 2.9 acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural land trust. Motion to approve was carried unanimously, and yeah, this is the third property. They also received a variance from the Board of Adjustment concerning the 15-year waiting period, and that was unanimously approved as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Seth? There's been a motion to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. Resolution to suspend the rules for two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance adoption. The ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Black Hawk County Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999, subsection number 231 for Scott and Julie Martinson, and to consider the same for adoption and if adopted would be known as ordinance number 77-231.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer with a roll call vote.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, we're now in the portion of the meeting for the minor plats of all three properties. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seth?
Okay, yeah, this is, yeah, basically a request at 10271 Mark Road is a request to plat 6.1 acres in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural land trust. It was moved by Sage and seconded by Fezemeyer to plat 6.1 acres currently zoned a agricultural district in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural land trust at 10721 Mark Road, and motion to approve carried unanimously for the minor plat.
Any questions for Seth? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution with the minor plat of survey submitted by Ron and Jean Rebune to minor plat 6.42 acres located at 10615 Mark Road.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seth?
Okay. All right, yeah, this is another plat request for 10615 Mark Road, Ron and Jean Rebune, minor plat, request to plat 6.42 acres in order to split it off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural land trust. It was moved by Fezemeyer and seconded by Nagel to plat 6.42 acres currently zoned a agricultural district in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres to create an agricultural land trust at 10615 Mark Road. Motion to approve carried unanimously.
Great. Any questions for Seth? It's been moved and seconded. Please answer with a roll call vote.